Thank you, ladies.
For being here. It is three minutes after six o'clock and I do see a quorum, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting. I know that Laura was not going to be able to join us tonight, so I think everybody is here who's intending to be here. And so let's have, let's have a roll call of members to establish a quorum, please. And I'm gonna go, I'm gonna call everybody out. Tricia?
Tricia Atteor-Tua here.
Laurel?
Laurel Hillboard here.
Chelsea?
Chelsea Parker here.
Vicky?
Vicky Wanacott here.
And Monica McDaniel here. Am I missing somebody? Somebody not on my radar? We got everybody, right?
Heather here.
Where's Laurel? Laurel?
I was hoping Heather would be here. Laurel's here. I was hoping Heather would be here. My view is changing, but we did get a resignation notice from Heather. And so I'm not sure if that's on, if that was mentioned here or not, but, but I was hoping Heather would be here, so. Susan?
It is on the agenda and I asked Heather, and she asked if she needed to come. I asked her that it would be lovely if she would come at the beginning of the meeting, just so we could say our goodbyes.
That's who I'm missing.
But she did not, but she apparently is not here, so.
Okay, alright. Well, if she hops in, I would like to give her a thank you. Yes, Alex?
For this meeting, should I mark her absent or not mark her at all?
Well, she did write a letter resignation. I don't know what the proper protocol would be for that. Susan, do you, do we have to accept her resignation, or how does that work?
So yes, we have to accept her resignation, so I think if we put her as absent, at least until the resignation is accepted and then she would not be included in the votes after that.
Okay, great. Is there anyone who would like to read the school verse? Okay, I'll read it. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the room be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. Before we go to agenda modifications, I would like to just take a brief moment to express my own sad, personal sadness and just express gratitude on behalf of Blue Oak School for one of our parent members who has passed away. Parent member Caleb Casey died the day before Christmas and so I would just like to have a moment of silence in honor of this extraordinary parent volunteer and member of our community before we move on with the agenda, please. Okay, thank you. Are there any requests for agenda modifications?
Monica, you need to do audience to address the council first. No, wait, never mind.
Not yet, not yet. Let's see if we want to move the agenda around first, so we can arrange our time together this evening. So are there any, are there any requests for modifications on the agenda? Hearing none. Let's move to item 1.5 and that would be meeting norms. And we're gonna go over that before audience to address the council. Susan, did you want to talk about the meeting norms and the uniform complaint form?
Sure, I can speak to that. We had some reason, some training this last week of board members and I was requested to put the process for speaking to the board and for dealing with any kind of complaints on the agenda here. So for, and just some meeting norms. You know, the, the board meeting is a meeting of board members and the audience is here to share their insights and ideas, but also to allow the board to have the discussion. So we just saw in the last meeting that there was some back and forth between, in the middle of the board discussion, there was also a community member discussion. So just to be able to help Monica to hold to that and to hold to that process so the board members can do their work. And the other thing is to make clear that when things come to the board at the beginning of the meeting during that audience to address, address the council, that anything that comes up there should not then be addressed later during the council meeting. So to make that clear, that if you bring something up during audience to direct, address the council, you won't, or should not hear comments about that later on in the day. So those are just some things and then the univore, the uniform complaint form is on the website. This is required, a required element of all schools, which is the way that if you have a concern you don't feel is being addressed, that you can bring it up and then it comes to my office and I can research it for you. We have a, a process that we do, which our standard process is if, if you have as a parent, you have a concern that you bring it up first to your teacher and then if the, it isn't something the teacher can take care of, then it comes on into the administration office. You should reach out to Alex to talk to me or send me an email and move through that way. We've had a couple of things come directly to the board and then, and not come through my office in the last few months. And that makes it difficult for me to address it in the way it needs to be addressed. So we're just reminding everyone about these procedures and norms and know that the good intent of all is understood.
Thank you, Susan. And just because we're in Zoom, we've changed up the, the meeting setups a little bit where if people would like to address the council or they have something they want to add, I mean, I, I try to run a meeting where we talk about it, discuss a matter, the board discusses it and I try to open up the conversation to members of the community if they want to chime in. At any time, your speaking time is about three minutes and I'll go over that when I open up audience to address the council. But we request that it not be sort of a conversation between everybody, because if we were all sitting in the same room, the council would be discussing item topics and then the, in public would be invited to join as, you know, as, as their turn is called on, but it's hard for us to keep track with this virtual platform of all the side conversations. And we really want everyone to be included in those conversations. Because that's what public forums about. So that's why we're just kind of, kind of getting that cleared up. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we move on to audience to address the council.
I'm Monica.
Like I said, yeah?
Just real quick, this is Chelsea. I just had a question regarding how to signal that you have a comment, because it appears that the hand raise function is not available, at least for me. Maybe it's a problem on my end, but I'm not seeing that.
Chelsea, it is available. If you, if for me, I went to participants and the raise hand function is there.
Yeah, that's not showing on mine, so that must be something wrong with mine, I guess.
Okay, so yeah.
Let's just go and check, yeah.
Yeah, I can raise my hand, so.
Yeah. Oh, I see. I see Alicia Trider's got her hand up, for instance.
Yeah.
I see that in there. And I'm not monitoring that. I believe Rachel Seha's, Ms. Seha's monitoring that. Is that true, Rachel? Or is it Brianna Lee?
I can totally do that.
I wasn't sure.
We, I hadn't thought of that before, so Rachel, will you please monitor the hand raising? Thank you.
Yeah, I can't, this is Tricia. I can't raise my hand either, so I wonder if it's a Mac thing, Chelsea.
Dang. So you'll just have to wave at us if you have.
Yeah.
No, Tricia, it looks like.
I can't raise my hand either.
It looks like it might be the newest Zoom update, so I just found it for anybody who is also seeing this problem at the bottom of the screen where it says reactions. If you click on that, it gives you the option to raise your hand, as well as other less useful reactions.
I, yeah, I have a can clap, a thumbs up, a heart, a joy, and then I have a variety of reactions, but not a hand raise.
It doesn't say hand raise on there?
No, it says clap, thumbs up, heart, joy, open mouth, and ta-da.
My raised hand's right under that. I'm not sure, but.
Okay, nevertheless. We do want people to, inclusion. So before I start taking, entertain people who want to address the council, I just want to read, "This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the committee concerning items not already on the agenda. Persons addressing the committee or council will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per presentation. The chair may establish a meeting speaking time for any item. Persons may not yield their time to another speaker." And I just want to also say that sometimes when you bring things up and, and addressing the council, we just want to like, see if we can handle it really quick, so that, we gotta be careful that doesn't devolve into conversation. So that all said, is there any audience who would like to address the council? And I saw, okay, Alicia? And is Alicia the only person, or are there other people also?
That's the only one that has their hand up.
Alicia, would you like to share with us, share with us, please?
Sure. Hi, my name is Alicia Trider. I'm the parent of a first grader at Blue Oak. And you might remember me from this summer because I brought to you the anti-racism resolution to the Charter Council this summer, which you all voted and passed, so thank you to your commitment, or for your commitment to anti-racism at Blue Oak. And I'm just coming today to check in on that resolution because parts of it did call for action items, specifically sections nine and 11. Nine talked about including respectful and positive representations of racial and ethnic identities in the, excuse me, curriculum content and the language we use in and out of the classroom. And then section 11, the last part of the resolution, called for the adoption of policies, practices, curriculum, and professional development opportunities to eradicate systemic injustices at Blue Oak. So this is, I'm just wondering where Blue Oak is at in terms of reaching some of these goals. And I know we can't talk about it right now, but I want to propose that an agenda item be added to the monthly meetings to update the Blue Oak community as to our progress in meeting these resolution items. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience to address the council?
Not that I see.
Okay, thank you. And so we're gonna move on. So that's like, again, one of those things where it's like, we just let the council address us. Chelsea, did you want to add something?
I do, and I apparently cannot raise my hand, even though it says I can. I, I know I'm not an audience, but I did want to take this time at the beginning of the meeting real quick to apologize for presenting material at the last meeting that was a real trigger point for a lot of people. It wasn't, it wasn't something that I thought through fully, and so I wanted to apologize for that. It was not my intention to trigger people or catch people in a spot to make them hurt. And so I do sincerely want to apologize for that and, excuse me, I should have approached that differently and I will be more cautious of my actions going forward and, and be more thoughtful. And so I just wanted to publicly apologize.
Thank you. Laurel?
Thank you, Chelsea.
I, I just wanted to make a comment and, and thank Chelsea. Every one of us makes our best effort and our best intent. I regard you all with great respect and appreciate that we come together and try to do this work together. And Chelsea, I think you're an important part of it and your apology is gracious and thank you, but I guess throwing out the love toward you, Chelsea, if that's official language. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience to address the council? Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. So items 2.1 through 2.4. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
This is Chelsea. I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chelsea.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a first and we have a second. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote. Vicky. Okay, Tricia?
Tricia Atteor-Tua, aye.
Laurel?
Laurel Hillboard, aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Vicky?
Vicky Wanacott, aye.
And Monica McDaniel, aye. Thank you. So the consent agenda passes. Now we're into school governance. Item 3.1, Charter Council Member Resignation. Susan, did you want to share about this since Heather's not here?
Sure. I can. Heather has been a parent and a member of this community for around 20 years and has both been an employee and a board member and a parent during that period of time. She made some decisions about her own family and their needs, which made it not possible for her to continue on the board. So she has turned in her resignation and I request that you accept it, then we'll move forward to refilling the position starting next month.
Thank you. And before we move on too much, I, can you guys hear me? Okay. I want to honor Alicia's request for follow-up about the racial inclusion. I didn't hear any board members requesting that to be agendized. I don't know if I want to request a monthly item, but I would like to follow up, especially the day after Martin Luther King Day, to find out what's been going on with that. So I would like to request at least an agenda item for a report on that for next month.
Monica, we cannot address something that came up during the items to address the account, to items. We can't do that.
Okay, alright, thank you. So, okay, so then item 3.2, Finance Committee. Chelsea?
Monica, before we move to item 3.2, I'd like to make a motion to accept Heather's resignation from the Charter Council.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We have a first, is there a second?
This is Tricia. I'll second that.
Okay, first and second, any further discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Tricia?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
And Monica McDaniel, aye. It's sad to see her go. So I wish she was here so that we, she could hear that we're sad to see her leave. She was a great service to the Charter Council. Okay, item 3.2, Finance Committee. Chelsea?
Yeah, so this last Finance Committee meeting was a little more kind of back to normal. It was a pretty quick meeting. We reviewed the financial reports that you all just passed on the consent agenda. Things are looking good. See. Oh, there was, there is some, and you may have seen this in the news or heard of it, there was some in the budget proposal from the governor, some specific additional funding to schools available. Thank you. It's my dinner. Some additional funding to schools that are, is available for COVID and COVID-related expenses. Susan was going to start preparing things to be able to apply for that. However, we are awaiting additional information because the information we had had at that time ties, it has a lot of red tape tied to that money, which is anticipated could possibly even cost the school more than what's being granted to the school. So so it sounds really exciting, but we are cautiously monitoring and watching how that unfolds before we jump in. And that's it.
Thank you. Susan, do you want to add anything?
I do not. That's.
Okay. Thank you for weighing that, because getting money always sounds good on the front end, but you got to weigh whether it's going to be worth it, so I appreciate you with your diligence with that. Thank you. Item 3.3, Policy Review. Homeless policy, second reading. Susan?
Yes, this is the policy we presented last time. We were asked to make a few adjustments in the language, which we've done. And it's here for your second review, discussion, and a possible approval.
Does anybody have discussion about the homeless policy? And have any changes been made since the last we reviewed this?
Alex, if you could help, I think it was asked to change the person that the language is in and we made some adjustments to that.
Can you do some language about Alex?
Yeah, I changed it from, yeah, to person first, so instead of saying homeless students, I said children and/or youth who are experiencing homelessness.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for that.
Anybody?
I'm ready to approve it.
Okay. We have a first. Is there a second to approve the homeless policy?
I'll second that. Monica, this is Chelsea.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion about the homeless policy in its second reading before we vote on it? I don't know if I can see everybody in the meeting or not, but the hand, the, the images I see, I don't see any hands up.
I'll let you know if I see something, Monica.
Perfect. That's what I was, I'll look to Ms. Seha. Thanks, Ms. Seha. Such a fun name to say. Okay. No further discussion? Okay, we'll have a vote. Tricia?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Thank you. Vicky?
Aye.
And Monica McDaniel, aye. Thank you so much, Susan. I know that's, and Alex, I know that's a lot of work, but it's really important to have these policies in place. Okay, so the next item is Marketing Meeting Volunteer. And Susan, this is all under your, so you have a meeting set up with the marketing people, right?
Yes, so last month you approved a contract with MC2, which is a local marketing company. And they asked for a small team to help give input into what our message should be or information about our message. So they, and it's important to them that the people on this team are recognized and responded to it with authority, so that once that information is done, that they can accept that as being, having, as the community having spoken. So I've started the team with, the members of the team are those who have been engaged in discussions about marketing ideas in the past, and that's Riley Murray and Maggie Blakely are both on that committee. But I'm also asking for a board member who might be interested in giving us this information as well. Our, our first meeting is on Thursday in the afternoon.
What time on Thursday?
I believe it's from 2:00 to 4:00.
It's from, yes, it's from 2:00 to 4:00. Thank you, Alex. Alex is also on the committee, by the way.
So I could do that. I would love to do that. I have a class that ends at 1:55, so I might be five minutes late, but, but I, I would love to do that. I would love to volunteer for that.
Alright.
Okay, does anybody object to me volunteering?
I think Monica would be a great fit for that, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you. We have a final volunteer for that committee. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Let me write that on here, so I can make sure I know. And you're gonna send me a meeting maker, or at 2:00 PM, 2:00 to 4:00 PM, okay, on Thursday. Okay, great. Alright, thank you. Alright, so moving on, school calendar.
Your next item is to approve next year's school calendar. This has been reviewed by members of faculty and our leadership team. It's one of their duties, so they have helped us prepare it. Alex has beautified it and here it is. We were able to add this year to the, the non-instructional days. We were able to include Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 11th and still keep within our 177 days of instruction.
The school where I work did a new modification, maybe just for this year, where they are giving us an additional break in February. I were really grateful for that, but I think that's going to extend, that's just for the school where I work. Are there any questions about the school calendar?
I just have a a request, because I actually had a question around the October 11th date, because I noticed that Chico Unified does not have that day off. So I looked and I couldn't think of what holiday it was right off the top of my head. On my calendar, it still shows as Columbus Day. I would love to, maybe instead of just having the school closure and holidays marked in red. I know Chico Unified at the bottom of their calendar lists, like which holidays are being honored on the calendar, and so I would love, I would love it to say Indigenous Peoples' Day to show what we're truly honoring and, and really the, and, and just, and obviously true with any of the, the holiday periods that we're observing.
That's a good point. I didn't realize that was down there. Cannot be added?
Yes, that can be added.
Thank you.
Monica, do you have a hand pat for Alicia Trider?
I saw that. Let me get the board first, but thank you. Thank you for that. I'll, I'll get you, Alicia, in just a second. Laurel?
I want to comment that there are some really excellent Indigenous people using the Canadian Lingo First Nation folks' activities on that day. And I think, I, I wouldn't disprove the calendar on the basis of this, but I wish that people might consider, you might send teachers, a group of teachers to the activities they have here in Chico and they could see them, because it could be that your students or, you know, our students at Blue Oak could participate in some really wonderful activities that go on that day. I know we took all students to the activities in Chico and, you know, it's from a fair distance and it was really, really worth it. So I just want to note there are things going on that day that you might want to consider would be a better use of the day for students if it's really to inform them about Indigenous people. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I like that suggestion. Alicia?
Yeah, I just also wanted to suggest at some other schools where I also work at Chico State and Butte College, to be inclusive with the calendar and with our language that we use. With the break in November, instead of calling it Thanksgiving break, we call it the fall break. And because not everybody celebrates Thanksgiving. And then with the December break, we call it winter break instead of Christmas break. Just those little tweaks, because we get recognized that not everyone celebrates the same holiday, excuse me, the same holidays. And it just helps us to be more inclusive with our, our student population. And when we're talking about, you know, what breaks and when, it helps folks understand. Yeah, just want to add that as suggestions for the calendar.
And Alicia, I'd add spring break rather than Easter, correct? That's your thinking?
I don't think those are listed on here. Did we say that?
They're not currently listed, but when we do list them, I like that change of the, of the language. That's a good observation. A lot of, a lot of schools have adopted spring break and winter break, but not fall break. So if we could just maybe keep that in mind when we add those, those distinctions to the bottom of the calendar. Make sense? It is? Okay. Any other conversation about the, the school calendar? And we need to approve this, right, Susan?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to? Okay, so is there a motion to accept the school calendar?
This is Tricia, I'll make a motion to accept the school calendar. With, do you, do we want to include adding the listing of what the holidays are?
Yes, please do, Tricia.
Okay, so accept the school calendar and adding the holidays and what they're for, what we're observing.
And I'll second with the agenda slate modification that we use, that we use inclusion, inclusive language when we add those, those dates. Sound good?
Yeah.
So there's a first and a second, any further discussion? All right, I'm gonna have a vote. Tricia?
Tricia, aye.
Laurel? We didn't hear you, dear.
How about the technology? Laurel, aye.
Thank you. And Chelsea?
Aye.
Thank you. Vicky?
Aye.
And Monica McDaniel, aye. Okay.
Monica?
Yes.
I like the way we're not saying out our whole name, but we are supposed to signify it where it's a visual for people who may not hear it. So we should be putting our hand up when we say aye. I just want to point that out.
All right, thank you, I know, I never do that, so thank you, okay. It's good adoption, we're figuring it out as we go along. Okay, the school accountability report card. Susan, that's under your purview also, please?
Yes, so this is the annual required school accountability report card. It covers some of the required elements of the school. And it will be also forwarded to the California Department of Education for their posting. So can you roll down a little bit on it, please, to the next page? First page is contact information and information about the school. The second is the number of students. This is for the 1920 school year. And breaks down our enrollment by student group. Then it discusses the credentialing of the teachers and also our curriculum that we have. The condition of our facility, this is from a report that examination walkthrough that's done every year. Our pupil outcomes. Let's see, because we did not have a CAPS last year, we do not have any outcomes listed in this area. That's the standardized state testing. Then it's parent engagement, and this talks about the different ways that we engage parents at the school. And again, this is for the 1920 school year. Our suspension and expulsion rates, which bumped up in 1819, which was really common for the state as, or the area as a whole because of the campfire, and then dropped back down the next, the following year. Work on our school safety plan and class sizes. Some support. FTEs, quite a bit of this is because we contract with special education for services, so they were not, are not part of our direct employment.
Susan, can we go back to the class sizes real quick?
Sure.
Um, I think there were just a couple of things that kind of jumped out at me as maybe some holdovers. But like, second grade, it shows that the average class size is 18, but there are two classes over 33 students. And then third grade, it shows that there are four classes. Fourth grade, that data would indicate that there are 32 students in each of the two fourth grade classes. Fifth grade shows four classes and sixth grade shows six classes.
Wait, what am I seeing?
I think the numbers in the last three columns maybe got jumbled a little bit. I can, and I can email that to you directly, I just wanted to ensure since we're submitting that.
I see what you're saying, okay. I'll have, this is data that was actually pulled from our, directly from our CalPad status, so I'm not sure if I can adjust it or not, but I will see what I can do.
Okay.
Alicia, did you have a question?
Yes, a question and comment. Looking over the, this report, I was just looking at Sadlier, which says that that's the book that's used for the reading and language arts on that, the notes that we were just looking at. But Sadlier is, and I, I believe Blue Oak to be a secular school, but Sadlier is not. They are forming, it says about us on their website. They have been forming K through 12 students in the Catholic faith and preparing them for academic success by offering a variety of educational materials in print and digital formats. And that gives me pause, because I don't see Blue Oak as a Catholic institution.
So respond to that, sadly has two divisions. They do have a a secular division as well as a religious division. So our materials are vetted for and have been used in public schools for many years. The materials that we use have been used in public schools for many years. And they are not secular, secular, secular.
Secular?
Secular, thank you.
So they aren't secular, because I thought Blue Oak was secular.
And they are, they are not Catholic materials, they are, they are not religious materials. Alicia?
Sure, no, I would just be open to maybe some parent vetting or maybe the Equity Task Force looking at those as well to make sure that we look at them through a racial justice lens and we aren't missing something there that folks who are religious might see or not see. That just gives me pause, because we are not a religious family, and I know other families at Blue Oak aren't either. And I'm concerned about that curriculum being Catholic-based.
Certainly, the curriculum is certainly open for you to look at at any time.
Excuse me, Susan, I think you misspoke at a certain point in that and meant secular rather than religious. I think there was a little confusion in the way we described it.
Yeah, they are not religious materials.
And what are those materials used for specifically?
They are vocabulary, grammar, phonics materials. It's, it says it's what we're piloting for this year.
Oh, I see it, yeah, okay. And so it's just beginning to be used, it has, it's new, it's a new implementation.
Right, it's not, it's in pilot, it hasn't come to the board for approval yet.
Okay.
However, it's being very well received by the faculty. It's working, you know, the needs of a Waldorf school or any alternative education school often do not fit the usual publishers that publish for a district. So we had some time finding a program that would fit into the flexibility needed for the Waldorf program. And I'm hearing a lot of good reports from the faculty about it.
And that to me means a lot, if the faculty vets it instead of just administration imposing it?
Yeah, it didn't come from me.
Okay.
Or from admin, and it was, yeah, it is. And definitely, we've had some parents look at it as well, so, though we haven't had a formal committee. And again, we can, you know, any parent can look at our materials at any time, so.
But we will be vetting that curriculum in particular in the future, correct?
Yeah, I'm probably.
So there's still time to review it, okay. So in terms of this particular document, is there any further discussion?
I have a question, just wondering how we would be part of the process of looking over curriculum?
You mean as far as establishing, as far as review, review committee?
No, you had just said any parent can look at the curriculum. I just don't know how to access anything outside of my own child's class.
Just send in an, an email to Alex and we'll work it out from there.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Do I hear a motion to accept the school accountability report card?
Do we need to, the motion to include making those corrections on the class sizes, or?
Yes, we do. And please say if possible, because I'm not sure that I can make those changes.
And so I'll make a motion to accept the school accountability report card. If possible, making changes to the class sizes.
Thank you.
This is Chelsea, I'll second.
Thank you, so we have a first and a second, are there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Tricia, we'll go for a vote. Tricia?
Aye.
Thank you. Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you. Chelsea?
Aye.
Thank you. Vicky? Vicky, rose her hand and said aye. Monica McDaniel, aye. Okay. That feels a lot more officious. Okay, so faculty, we have a faculty, faculty report from Riley and Brianna.
Hello, hello, let me just see if I can share my screen. I have the report from, oh, yeah, I'm not able to share yet.
Just, just changed it.
It's a powerful word. Oh, now I can, wonderful. This is the report, the presentation that I had prepared for our December meeting. I went to Ms. Sheila's classroom. And so let's see a little bit of what happened in December in her room. Just first had to point out, Ms. Sheila just has impeccable taste. If anyone's been in Ms. Sheila's classroom, it is just glorious. When you all can come back on campus, just go visit, say hi, it's a beautiful place. You feel like you're in the most wonderful home that you could be in. So I wish I was a third grade student again in her room. She was working on calendar work with her students. And just wait until you see. So calendar work is a tradition at our school for third grade. It touches on many areas for students with what they are working on in the third grade curriculum. Skip counting with multiplication by sevens, spelling the months and days of the week, the length of each month, and how the dates fall. And you'll notice there are beautiful seasonal pictures with cursive writing versus lovely, lovely, lovely. Another big part of third grade is our appreciation for the seasons. On a typical year, students are out there digging in the garden, harvesting, turning the compost, whatnot. So it's another way to just embrace our year and the third grader, who is very much in tune with the seasons and the work that they do outside. So here are some questions. Do we notice what is happening in nature during different months? I myself have been noticing this January is not typical. I want more rain, okay. Clicking the button, there we go. This is my favorite. Ms. Sheila, I wish you're on here, but this is my favorite thus far for, for calendar months. Another big piece of third grade is time and measurement. These skills we really focus on in the third grade, which are in alignment with our standards and our skills. And the hands-on skills that we acquire in third grade and practice throughout the year. So it really is just a perfect culminating project in my mind. And to tie in with it all, the students were able to read Farmer Boy, which also follows a calendar year from one winter to the next. And it's an exciting story for students who are very much in the third grade body of wanting to work hard and then also all the other things that happen in third grade in the realm of feelings. But this story, it has a lot of connections to math, passing of time and seasons, practical arts, the heart of third grade gardening, cooking, fibers, and shelter. That just wraps it up so beautifully. And a super special personal connection, that's one of my favorite things about being a Waldorf teacher, is really the personal treasures that we get to share with our class. So Ms. Sheila's great-grandmother wrote poetry, and it's now being shared in her class. Ms. Sheila did the math, and her grandma was the same age as the daughter of Almanzo from Farmer Boy and Laura Ingalls Wilder. So she shared that special poetry and a special story with her students and included some pictures for us to share. So there's Ms. Sheila, so sweet. So that's just a little tidbit of what happened in winter. My personal connection to that is that I myself, with my group of fourth graders, worked on calendar work as well, but we took it from making a calendar since third grade got cut short last year. And so we were able to finish it this winter. And then we went right into Maya mythology this January. And we got to talk about the calendar work there and all the amazing math that went on for the Maya people. And that's what I had to share, so thank you all for tuning in.
Thank you, Riley.
Thank you, Riley. That's one thing to share with Waldorf parents of younger kids, is that by the time your kids graduate, you have tubs and tubs and tubs of artwork and calendars and the books they make. And so, that's why when we're talking about curriculum, I'm like, but we make our own books. You know, and trust me, I've got tubs of them. But the one, one of my favorites was the third grade calendar. And I reused it for a couple of years, till my daughter told me I should stop. That was great, thank you. And the hologram, that's another thing about third grade that we can't do right now, so. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay. Item 5.1, executive director's report. So Susan, that's back to you.
That's back to me, so first, we always like to share the fun things we hear children say and do, but we really haven't had much time with kids on campus since our last meeting. So I'll just share, we went around and shared pictures about our break and just saw a lot of adorable pets and children and decorations and beautiful scenery. So appreciated that connection with everybody. As far as the COVID funding, this is referring again to what Chelsea mentioned in the finance committee, and we are still waiting. The Mary Sakuma at BCOE, the County Office of Ed, is following up with the county, the county superintendents statewide who have a lot of questions about that, this. So I'm hoping that once legislate, the legislators are in session. So I'm hoping that once legislate, the legislators are in session, we'll get more information. We had a great online concert and it was really fun on the 20th. So some, some a full hour of live music. So that was fun. I've been meeting with of some experts on the full day kindergarten preschool offering that we're working on for next fall. There is some new funding possibly coming forward for that, which may help us out. So, but there's some more work to do. And we are continuing to talk with John Roth about a new building option. So just want, wanting you to know that that's on the list of topics. The pedagogical team is meeting regularly and continues to work on building grade level resources, reviewing the class novels sets to review representation of diverse cultures, races, and genders. And just to say that this topic is very close to the hearts of our teachers, and they're really glad to be able to move forward. And then finally, we will start on February 17th will be our first opportunity to do a presentation at the Chico Unified School Board and be on their agenda. The charter leaders, and there's about nine of us, I think, in this area, are each going to take an opportunity to present at the board meeting so that we get that that connection at a more stronger level with our authorizer. So those are the biggies that we've been working on. They'll, yeah, those are the biggies that we've been working on, aside from COVID-19. Who is on the pedagogical team? Kari Madera, Sheila Moss, and Cheryl Grant.
Alicia has her hand up.
Okay, Alicia?
Hi, yeah, sorry. This is going back to the previous presentation. I was just thinking about Laura Ingalls Wilder's Farmer Boy and thinking about the anti-racism resolution that we, we were just talking about earlier that I, that you all passed. And that book and Laura Ingalls Wilder in particular are known to be highly racist towards Native Americans. So I have concerns with that, the use of that book and the choice of that book, especially because when we did our survey of parents this summer, a lot of folks that replied in that survey reported that they identified as Native American. So that gives me some pause. And I'm wondering, I don't know what to do with that information. But again, pointing to the anti-racism resolution that we all, that you all agreed and passed on this, this summer. I have concerns about the choices being made in terms of curriculum and how it's affecting our, our community.
So I'd like to respond to that. We have the Equity Task Force, of course, that's been meeting. And one of the areas that we, at the beginning of the year, asked for support from the Equity Task Force is to help us provide new ideas for curriculum. We haven't had anybody volunteer or the work really start on that committee from that. And we are discussing how to get that level support. I think the difficulty in the middle of a pandemic that I'm hearing from faculty is really being able to engage with new curriculum at this time and also being aware of that, of those issues and making those changes. And Sheila in particular has discussed with us at the pedagogical team, the work that she did with her class around that language and those, those sections, very specifically that she's addressing as to why that language is not okay and that sort of thing. So, so that is actually part of the work that the pedagogical team is doing and hopefully with support from the Equity Task Force when they can.
And I'll just put out there that I am happy to help with the curriculum. Whenever we get to that on the Equity Task Force, I would be happy to help with that.
Thank you, Sheila. I thank you, Alicia. Alicia, thank you for bringing that up. I remember reading something about that recently myself. You know, we were all raised on Little House, or at least I was. And, you know, we're starting to see the world through a whole new lens. And so, so it's important to keep those those things that we might have thought were okay, and then we're looking at them through a new lens. And so, but I can see that the pedagogical team, that their commitment is to, to being inclusive. And I trust the members of that team to, to marry and to review Waldorf, the Waldorf offerings that are around. So thank you for your additional input there and your response. So thank you.
I might suggest that this needs to be agendized for further discussion and at a time when other people are aware that it's being discussed. Just if we're looking at it in terms of ground.
Thank you. And Susan, did you go over the COVID response? No, I haven't done that yet. Okay. Would you like to do that now? Yes, can, I think there's one more page on this report. Is there? Oh, I'm sorry. I did go past the pedagogical. After that, then there's the COVID response. There it is. Okay. Okay. So it helps to have my notes in front of me. So yes, we continue to work on addressing the COVID 19 issues. We are bringing the remainder of the students that are currently on our waiting list on campus. We have expand, we're expanding three classrooms to accommodate the current requests, which is either by moving walls or adding a room per class and aid support. This is all very experimental, I think would be the good word. But we are working specifically with the teachers and talking to them. I think of current information is that we have about, we currently, as of Monday, the 25th, which is the first day of the new semester, will have about 67% of our students onsite or desiring onsite. So we do have a couple more classrooms that are now looking to be impacted. So we are still working on bringing them all onsite. I'll be sending out a survey to the, the parents that are still on distance learning to try to find out if they are looking at staying on distance learning throughout the remainder of the year or if once teachers are all vaccinated, if they're thinking they'll come onsite. So I haven't quite fleshed out those questions yet. But I will be doing that. And the final note, I've added information here for you to look at from the the health department. So you can see what they're saying about the spreading of COVID. I also want to share that we did, we were able to get our first vaccine shot over the weekend, 16th and 17th. And we're tracking who is able to get that taken care of. And then our second shot will be, it's the Moderna. So our second shot will be in mid-February. And then we will have, the staff will have had that available to them. So that's where we are. Any questions about the COVID? I know, I'll, I'll share with you, I know that we have a number of families who have, who are advocating for the children to be onsite full time, and we understand that desire and are really still trying to work to balance both the, the on, to direct the onsite program and the distance learning program together. So, which is a challenge. So that's it. Thank you. And also keeping staff and faculty safe as well. So, okay, any questions about the, the COVID response?
Tricia has her hand up.
Yeah, so I just have a comment. So in sitting in with parent council last week, there was some discussion about the homeschool option again with coming back onto onsite. There are some parents that do have concerns due to whatever situations in their family. And if there would ever, there would be a consideration for Blue Oak to do the homeschool again. So I just wanted to, I told them I would bring that up when we talked about it this meeting. So just as a.
Yeah, when we discussed this, the options at the beginning of the year, it was really clear that it was either distance learning or home study. We couldn't really do both. So it may be that as we reduce the or have more students on campus and focus more on that, that we may move from a distance learning to a home study model. But we can't do all three. That's just not.
Yeah, yeah. And I think their thought was more when we go back to full onsite, that they have the option to still be a part of Blue Oak and do a, do the homeschool when we're kind of back to an onsite school as a majority of our students. So, and I don't know how many parents are that are seeking that, but it was something that was discussed there. So.
Thank you, Tricia. Yeah, the discussion about adding a preschool and a homeschool faction have been going on for a long time. And then there, there gets momentum for it. And then, you know, it's just, it's a matter of needing a lot of different factors involved.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think what the, the point they were bringing up is now that some parents have done the distance learning, maybe the homeschool option isn't as scary to them as maybe it once was because they've had a little bit of a taste of it. So maybe there would be more people that would be interested in it. So it was just that there are some families that have left and went to homeschool and now came back because they're able to do distance learning. So, so that was kind of the discussion they were having. So.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to us and for being the liaison with the parent council.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? So Susan, before we adjourn, just so board members are clear, if they have items that they want to agendaize, how do they get those on the agenda? If they're inspired to add something to the agenda, do they email you and add it to the agenda? How, what's the protocol for that? So the agenda is established when you and I meet. So they could send an email to, to me, to you, and copy Alex. Okay.
I had a question on the, the information you put out, Susan, about adding, you talked about expanding classrooms and adding classrooms with aid support. So will the students that are in a class that's split like that, will the portion that are, will the teacher be going between the two classrooms? Or will one portion of the class have the aid all the time and the other portion have the teacher all the time? What does that look like for, for those classes that are being split into two rooms?
Okay. So really, what happens is the group that is considered that class increases, they're just using two rooms to facilitate that. So the teacher will go between the two rooms. The aide will go between the two rooms. The children themselves may mix between those two rooms as well. So they may be in with one smaller group at one time, say for a math lesson, and then move in, in, exchange into another class. The, the factor, the limiting factor here is the six-foot distancing within the classroom space. So if we can only fit 16 children or 15 children in a class in order to increase the home, whole amount, then they'll be in another classroom. So like I said, it's, it's a bit of an experiment. So.
Sure, sure. Essentially, we are increasing the cohort size while still offering the ability to keep safe distance between the students and the faculty.
Okay, that's correct.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you for that.
Any other questions about the COVID, about the COVID response? Okay. And were there items from the last, last month's agenda that we still needed to go over? I'm seeing the end of the agenda and I'm kind of not believing that, my eyes. So is there any other things that we need to address in this meeting?
I have one other question that I don't know if you can address or not. But how would somebody who's interested, I, we had a charter council member resign at this meeting. And so if, how are we getting that word out to our community, especially because it is a parent seat? And how would interested parents go about getting that seat?
So the first step for me is to go back to the bylaws because we did have additional parents run for that position. And to see if the first step, and I haven't had a chance to research this yet, Alex and I are still working on that, to see if the first step isn't to reach out to those who ran for office to see if they're still interested in it. Beyond that, the way to get more information, if you are interested in running for the office, is to email Alex and ask her. We'll get you on the list.
Thanks, Susan.
Question, good question. Excuse me, any other questions before we adjourn? Okay. All right. So hearing nothing, then we will adjourn our meeting to February 16th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much for being here.